All right, good evening, everyone. I would like to call the November 26, 2019 council meeting to order and I'll ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Mr. Reynolds?
Here.
Mr. Chambers?
Here.
Ms. Walden?
Here.
Mr. Mullins?
Here.
Dr. Lee?
Here.
Ms. Shinholster?
Here.
Okay, we do have a quorum present of council members, so if you will, please stand with me for the prayer and pledge. Gracious Lord, we thank you for tonight, we thank you for every person represented here. We ask you to continue to be with each and every person in our city and outside of our city as we enter into the holiday season. May everybody be thankful for today that we have and be grateful for the day after. Lord, we thank you for this council, we ask that you continue to empower us to do the right thing for this community, that we may be a light shining forth on the hill. We do pray in Jesus' name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have two presentations on tonight. The first is a proclamation to highlight the wonderful work of hospice and to pay tribute to the dedicated workers who help with the palliative care. I would like for everyone here to join me up front as I ask the clerk to read the proclamation. Those that are here for the health care for hospice, please come up front.
Whereas, as Medicare's first proven coordinated care model, hospice is a program that works offering person-centered compassionate care, ensuring people dignity, choice, and quality of life. And whereas the hospice model involves an interdisciplinary team-oriented approach to treatment, including expert medical care, quality symptom control, and comprehensive pain management as a foundation of care. And whereas beyond providing physical treatment, hospice attends to the patient's emotional, spiritual, and family needs, and provides family services like respite care and bereavement counseling. Whereas, in increasingly fragmented and broken health care system, hospice is one of the few sectors that demonstrates how health care can and should work at its best for its patients. And whereas, a growing body of peer-reviewed research indicates that timely access to hospice and palliative care can decrease hospitalizations and emergency room visits and increase quality of life for patients and family caregivers. Whereas, every year more than 1.5 million Americans living with life-limiting illness and their families receive care from the nation's hospice programs and communities throughout the United States. And whereas hospice and palliative care organizations are advocates and educators about advanced care planning that helps individuals make decisions about the care they want. And whereas, Centers for Medicare and Medicaid Services have pledged to put patients first in all of its programs, including hospice, ensuring a coordinated and patient-led approach to care, protecting patients' choice and access to individualized services based on a patient's unique care, needs, and wishes. Now therefore, I, Mary Parm Copeland, as mayor of the city of Millisville, do hereby proclaim the month of November 2019 as National Hospice and Palliative Care Month in the city of Millisville and encourage citizens to increase their understanding and awareness of care at the end of life and to observe this month with appropriate activities and programs.
Okay. The next one that we'll be presenting tonight is due in a large part to the diligence of our top administration and to the finance managers, Shaquita, Danzy, and Brenda Josie. I would like Ms. Shea to come up front and join me to be presented with the certificate of achievement.
This Government Finance Officer Association's Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting, presented to the city of Millisville, Georgia, for its comprehensive annual financial report for the fiscal year ended June 30, 2018. Signed, Christopher P. Murril, Executive Director and CEO.
We have an outstanding group of people here at the city of Millisville that does an outstanding job, and we do appreciate them all for their hard work and dedication. All right, you all have received the minutes of the November 12, 2019 council meeting minutes. Are there any corrections or discussion? Is there a motion to adopt?
No move.
Second.
I'll ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Ms. Walden?
Aye.
Mr. Mullins?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster?
The minutes are adopted as official. We have a public hearing to conduct tonight to consider rezoning 1010 West Charleston Street. The procedure for conducting the hearing to amend the Land Development Code will be as follows. Once it has been determined that this public hearing has been properly posted and advertised, the clerk will read the proposed amendment to the Land Development Code. We will then hear a report from the Planning and Zoning Director, including the advisory decision of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Council will first hear from the applicant and anyone who wishes to speak in favor of the amendment. We will then hear from anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to the amendment. If anyone speaks in opposition to the amendment, we will then give the applicant an opportunity for rebuttal, but the rebuttal must be limited to the points or issues raised by the opposition. Please make sure that before you speak, that you give your name and address for the record. The public hearing we have to consider tonight is ordinance O-1910-22 to rezon 1010 West Charleston Street from single-family dwelling 2 to multifamily residential dwelling 2. Has this public hearing been properly posted and advertised?
Yes, ma'am, it has been.
I will ask the clerk to read the ordinance by caption.
In ordinance meeting, ordinance passed and adopted on the 10th day of December 2002, known as the Land Development Code of the city of Millisville, Georgia, ordinance rezones property located at 1010 West Charleston Street.
I will recognize the zoning administrator for a report to include the advisory decision of the Planning and Zoning Commission, Ms. Murphy Graham, if you will, please.
This was unanimous to approve by the Planning and Zoning Commission, and the applicant is desiring to place like three duplexes on this lot, and he will be marking it for the VA, and it's my understanding that he is working with the VA to help the veterans so they can move in, but I will let him kind of explain what all that that he's doing.
Thank you, Ms. Murphy. Is the applicant or anyone else present who would like to speak in favor of the amendment? If you will, come to the podium and state your name and address for the records, please.
My name is Vincent Simmons, 714 Frazier Court in McDonough, Georgia. And I do have copies, I'm not sure if I can hand them out.
What type of copies do you have?
Basically, just showing you the designs for the duplexes.
You can pass them.
I think it's the same one we have in the package.
Do you have it in the package already?
I think so, yes, sir.
With a little adjustment, but that's...
You have plans with that one, right?
Yes, I just have some, just adjusted a little bit, but I think, you know, the only thing changed are the updated duplexes, because what I did, basically, in the last meeting, I talked about attached garage. It wasn't on the duplex, so I just updated this copy to have the attached garage shown on the duplex.
I like that.
I'm gonna let you enter that in, please.
Thank you. Yes, thank you. You want me to just pass them over?
Yes.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Yeah, my name again is Vincent Simmons, I'm here with my wife, Yvonne, and I will go through this briefing, and respectfully ask that you hold questions until the end. Again, I'm from Millisville, Georgia. I'm a U.S. Army veteran with 30 years of service, retired colonel, retiring in 2016. Between me and my wife, we have nine years of rental property experience. I am a member of the American Apartment Owners Association. This is where I'm able to do thorough background checks, get latest updates on landlord policies, and also get information on lessons learned from other landlords. With our land, we haven't had any code violations or no police calls out to our properties. The emphasis for this is for veterans. You know, it's a proven need, has been demonstrated all over the country, for veteran housing and other support, and I like to devote my time and energy and service to support that cause here in Millisville. A 2017 Veteran Administrative Report indicates that in Baldwin and the surrounding counties, there are over 6,000 veterans. Now those numbers will change with a future update, but as it stands, I plan to support veterans with six properties, six, I plan to support tenants, those veteran tenant, with six units. Also, I also want to focus in on the veterans 55 and older, that's my priority. Page 2 and 3, in your notes, basically highlight the duplexes, I have two there that I'm considering. Both are identified as two bedrooms, but I'm looking at a combination of one and two bedrooms. The units, I plan to build will be conducive to independent living. They also will have features that allow veterans with disabilities to be more functional in the home. The third page is, the fourth page, excuse me, is a land sketch. As mentioned, there'll be three duplexes, and I'm looking at a community area, a common area. Water and sewer lines are highlighted. Additional lines will be added as needed, I believe at my expense. Fire hydrants are within the regulated distance. And what are also significant about this area is that the hospitals and doctors' offices are less than one mile away for veterans. I will pause here and say, subject to any question, I request that 1010 West Charleston be zoned to support my plan. Thank you.
Can I ask one question? On these, on all these pictures that you've shown us, it's like one unit, and then it has the divided, like a duplex. So, and it's already zoned as SFR2, so that's already does the duplexes, is that not right, Mervin?
The amount SFD.
Okay, so the SFR2 is duplexes, I thought.
That's also single-family, like smaller lot sizes than the SF1 and the SF2.
Okay, so what he's wanting to build, that would accommodate that, so why is he trying to do the MR2?
And with the SFD, that is one duplex per lot, and he's wanting multiple duplexes on the lot, which is making it multifamily. If it was just one duplex, yeah, I would have said SFR.
But because he's wanting to build, I think you said six, right?
Three duplexes.
Three duplexes.
Four duplexes.
So did you, I was looking at your original plan, you didn't have a garage on it, but so, did you say they...
Yeah, the particular plan is we'll have attached garages.
Any other questions?
I have, I have a question, I have a couple of questions. First of all, I want everybody to know, this is Vincent Simmons, we were raised together, and he's a good person, and I understand what you're trying to do, but I have some concerns, some major concerns, okay? And I'm not trying to put you on the spot, but there's some things that I need to know, all right? There are some other residents in our area who wanted to come but who could not come, but I do see some district ones who are here, let's speak. I need to know, what kind of residential setting are you looking for? You know the area that we in, you stay here, stayed there for years and years, and you know the setting that we have, we have a lot of older people there, which we look out for one another in this area. You also have children who are in this area. So what type of setting are you looking for?
Well, we have a lot of older personnel in the area, so my, like I stated, my folks will be towards 55 and older. They are more stable. These veterans are basically, you know, from my experience, these veterans are just looking for homes, you know, they don't want to be notified as, you know, they did their service and they want to be, they want to be, they want to have a comfortable home, well-deserved of, and so I think, I want to continue the same, the same atmosphere that we have in the community. I'm hoping I'm getting at your questions.
Not really, but we'll get there. So why did you feel as though on Charleston Street and Pickens Street would be the environment for the veterans?
Well, this land has not been developed, you know, probably over 10 to 15 years. And I'm a veteran, and so I wanted to come back home to, you know, we learn about giving back in the military, and I wanted to come back home and give a service to the veterans. So my thing is, we already taking care of college students, you know, the college students here got more than enough space. And so, and so I'm trying, actually, to be honest, the only thing that I try to figure out is what is the need that I can provide as a veteran, knowing that veterans need homes, and so that's, that's what put me focused on that land. And that land is the same land that I, you know, we grew up around, and I just purchased it just to provide a need.
All right, let me ask you this, Mr. Simmons. I understand what you're saying, and I don't knock veterans. I have had family members who are veterans, two of them who were colonels, retired, and I still have some family members who were in the military service, so I'm not knocking that, and I'm not knocking what you're trying to do. It's all about making money, and I have no problem with that, but the question I'm about to ask you, you're gonna say, do it really make any sense, but I really want you to think about it as different ones come up. Do you really do believe that the area, the location that you would like to put this veterans duplex, duplex, is appropriate to have there? Now, we have had problems, maybe three or four years, but things have calmed down now, and there's no guarantee that things will always be smooth, but we want to try to take care of our homes. Now, you stay up near Atlanta, and you want to do this here. Who will monitor? Who will supervise?
Well, I love how to say it, that's my project. I'm looking for something to, that'll be something to bring me home to manage. First of all, I would be the manager. I mean, I've been managing, every job I had in the military, I've been leading people or managing things, millions of dollars. So to answer your question, while I have my home up there now, as I plan this, I am also planning my way to adjust to manage this property, because I lived here, and we know what Pickens Street was like, and so it does make sense to me, and I'm not trying to be smart, to, knowing that what I know, to establish something that's gonna bring it back to that stage.
It just scares me because, okay, you say you have some businesses very home, near Atlanta, and then you want to do this here. How can you be at two places at once?
I never said I had any businesses here.
Not here, there.
There, that's what I'm saying, once this is, once this is established, this is gonna be my focus, my concentration, my project. That's all I can tell you.
Are there any other questions from anyone else on the council?
Yes, I'm gonna drag this to Ms. Graham. If he would subdivide that lot, could he change it to from SF to SD, individual lots?
I don't think if we meet the lot requirement size.
Or the setback.
It makes two lots, yeah, this is a lot, this already a lot of veteran, I need one more. And it's a formal lot. Do you think you could get three lots out of that?
We have four.
Three lots out of that one lot?
Yes, and that was my aim, to be honest with you, if I had three lots, I just wanted to put three homes there.
Well, would they meet the setbacks on it, Mervin? Yeah, I don't know the dimensions.
But answer your question, then it could go, each lot could go SFD, if they could actually subdivide it and put one duplex on each.
All they had to do was get a varus there, right?
I get you.
On setback, yeah. Yeah, you get the varus on setback, right?
He could request...
Request, that's what I'm saying, that would be the process.
That would be pretty close, though.
I just don't know.
In that area to do that.
I'm just saying, I'm just saying that...
He loses a lot with two fronts.
Yeah, I'm one of them.
But it's something, you know, but he could certainly sit down, we certainly have done math on him.
Mr. Simmons, did the VA require you to do some, I'm right, some special accommodations, or you having to meet certain criteria from the VA as far as your lot size and...
I haven't, I haven't received any information on that, but I would say that I will be abiding by the American Disability Act, where special features will be in the homes.
So would you say this would be more of a community residential care, veterans' care home duplex?
Well, I would just say that the home that I'm gonna build is gonna, you know, six tenants, I'm gonna have a common area where they could, you know, where they could, you know, have to go together if they wanted to. I will have features like wider doors, handles on showers, zero entry into the garage, from the garage, two in front of the garage, handles on the doors, because arthritis, you don't want them twisted, so they can just, handles on the doors and handles on the sinks, high sinks in the bathroom, high toilets, and so those are the type of accommodations that will be made. So to answer your question about community, I'm just trying to support this with six tenant and try to make them as comfortable as possible.
So we're saying that this is located on 1010 West Charleston Street?
Yeah.
So I know all three duplexes cannot get on Charleston Street, so we'll have to get on Pickens Street. So the backside of the duplex would be on Pickens, facing Pickens?
It would be two, it would be two facing Pickens and one facing Charleston, as displayed in...
Yeah. It's on the different...
We've got a common area in the building.
Just in which way the house is, it would be facing.
Yeah, I like to say also that I have similar concerns about, you know, when someone asks me about, look at that, that's not a good place. You know, I have similar concerns, like I say, I grew up in that area, and so I will, so I send letters out to every, I send like 18 letters out.
I got them out. But it'd be nice if you had got out in the community and walked and talked to people.
I communicate with four, four personnel, but yeah, amen, amen.
All right, there'll be no more questions for the applicant. I'm gonna ask if there is anyone present who would like to speak in opposition. Thank you, Mr. Simmons.
Can you excuse me, I'm not well, but I had to come, and I am in total opposition.
State your name for me, Ms. Lundey.
Um, having...
Just state your name.
Oh, state my name. I'm Joan Lundey, and I live at 941 West Charleston Street, and I moved to Pickens Street when I was 17, when I got married. I am now 81 years old, and I moved to Charleston Street when my mother-in-law passed away, and we live in a family home. The thing is, I have nothing against veterans. I have two sons that are veterans, my husband is a veteran, my daughter is a veteran. Veterans, if they're responsible people, can get home loans easier than any ordinary person if they try. And the only thing I have about this is a bunch of men. I live alone, and I've been living alone, and for the past few years, we've had quiet times, and I certainly appreciate it and pray for it. And not that any of this would break up our peacefulness, but a bunch of men is different than family dwellers. Now, if someone says, move there with a family and kids, family and kids, fine, but a bunch of men, just men, because there are very few female veterans, and this is my opposition. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Afternoon, everybody. My name is Tanya Simmons. I live behind my mother on Charleston Street. I am a veteran. I've been friends with the Simmons all my life. And West End is quiet, and we would appreciate it if you would let it stay that way. It needs to continue the way it is. I live alone, and it would be rough with a bunch of men in a complex. And I am a veteran, and some veterans can be rough. And we have a war veterans home for veterans. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak in opposition to this amendment? Come on up, sir, to the podium and state your name and address for us.
My name is Maurice May, and I live on 440 North Pickens Street. And I've been there for about forty-five, forty-five years. And I can stand here and say today that everything hadn't gone to my liking since I've been there. What I mean by that, seem like something that you wanted there, you couldn't get there. I've been knowing not him, but his mother and brothers, and matter of fact, I've been knowing the Simmons family for a long time. And when I got the, when I got the letter that they wanted to bring this in, I didn't, I didn't know who he was at the time. And then I was told later who he was. Oh, yeah. I said, I know, I know of that family. And to me, they seem to be good families. But the situation that I have, where I look at it, when I got the letters saying what he wanted to do, the first thing I thought about, uh, what type of means are these gonna, are what type of veteran home this gonna be? Is it gonna be for peoples in wheelchairs? Is it gonna be for people that have their own transportation? Is it gonna be for people that have to catch a bus? Uh, it's gonna be for peoples that have to have someone to live with them? I'm not here to fight anything down that this young man start. I'm, I'm not here to fight you down. Because you mentioned about the service. I, I had two brothers that go in the service and two go to Vietnam, two fought in the war. So I'm saying to him, I'm saying to you, you done a good job. But as the one has spoke before me, it looked like to me, the way you descri, describe it, I know, I know, I'm not, okay, I'm, I'm gonna sit down. You described it, you, you saying Pickens Street and Charleston Street. One on Charleston, two on Pickens, or two on Pickens and one on Charleston? Well, is there any room in there for transportation? Do they have, do they, are they gonna have their own transportation?
Mr. Morris, you need to direct your, your questions to council.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay. That's okay.
He, talking about building, are they gonna, the one that's gonna be living there, are they gonna have their own transportation? Are they gonna be like some handicaps? Are gonna be a person that wanna live on his own? Are gonna have to have, you know, help? And then another thing, one more thing I wanna say that I'm, I'm gonna sit down. When he build it, when he get through with it, and he wanna turn it over to someone else, if it's not in the bylaws that he can't turn it over, he can turn, it could be turned over to anybody that'll come there and take over, they may do different things than he's doing. So I, I, I'm not fighting a young man. I'm not fighting, don't, I'm not, I'm not fighting anybody. But it's just, just idea, this veteran home coming to a little city, a little street like that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, I'm gonna ask the applicant if he has any rebuttal that you wanna come. That'll give you an opportunity to answer his question.
As it relate to, uh, men, uh, coming out, uh, well, it's not, it's not a ton of vision toward men, because it's any veteran that would, uh, would like a home. But I tell you, I, you know, it's, uh, I don't feel no ill feelings about what we're saying, because you guys have been living longer than I have. But my thing with the veteran home is I will manage it, uh, do thorough background checks because, like I say, most, while, like why you said, some veterans are not as good, most of them are caring, most of them want their own home, most of them take pride in, in their home. So, uh, looking, so I'm looking forward to thorough background checks and, and checking the property, just managing the property as best as I can. As it relate to what kind of veterans it would be accommodating, I mean, it would be veterans with wheelchairs, it would be veterans that make, that have cars, and you may have veterans that don't have transportation. And so, but I just, I just feel that this is not, this is not as, gonna be bad as, as you think it is. But I really appreciate your comments, and that's all I gotta say. I just leave it at that.
Mr. Simmons, I'm gonna ask you, so on the Charleston Street, they're gonna have parking out front, and then on Pickens Street, they'll have parking in front of the buildings?
Yeah. They will have...
The garage.
They will have a garage, then outside the garage, they will have an area.
To park.
Families to park.
Okay.
Well, come out, I'll make a suggestion. Just listen to the, you and everybody in the neighborhood. Would you consider trying to just withdraw this without prejudice and have time to communicate with people in the community and bring it back?
Well, I would rather for you to vote on it, and I just, I just go with the vote, and I just go with it. You know, I think one, one person mentioned that it's for the money. You know, I, it's not a money thing to me, because I can do other things and be successful. But I just wanna provide a service to the community. And, you know, like we said, veterans need support.
Right. Well, like I said, but like I said, you know, it's, it might be some other options on the table that, you know, we don't have no control over that you, by law, you, you have authority to do it. That's, that's all I'm saying. Maybe you could get with Mr. Graham and get with the people and see what you can do. You know, that's why I was suggesting about the subdivision of lots thing. And like I said, it's totally left up to you, you know, whatever you want, whatever you wanna do.
So if I walk away, just would it be a...
You wouldn't walk away.
You won't walk away?
You don't walk away. All it, all it basically would be doing is, is putting things on hold.
Yeah.
And, and for further discussion, um, maybe looking at some other options, whatever. But if you withdraw it without prejudice, then there, there is no vote. Or if we, we vote to allow that, then, then there is not a vote at this point in time.
Okay. Yeah, I would, I think that would be probably best to do.
Um, I, I'd like to say something, um, too, 'cause I, I keep, I have a friend that's doing this same thing in Warner Robins for veterans. And, you know, they, they have the, um, he has received support from the city of Warner Robins over there for what he's trying to do. He's actually trying to do it for female veterans rather than veteran, you know. But I, I noticed that everybody kept saying a bunch of men. And I, I just didn't want this to pass by with the generalization that when you talk about fifty-five-year-old veterans, that it's just men. But also, you're not talking about single men, because it could be a, a, a veteran and his spouse. Now, some people are not at, you know, when they become unable to care for a home, even if they've had a VA loan for a home, then they move into duplexes where there's less responsibility for them and someone else is doing the lawn and, and doing the repairs on the home because they're not physically able to do it. So when you say you're going to screen people, I, I would think that you would take that into consideration as well. So I just didn't want us to go home with the generalization that we're talking about just men and that you're gonna have a bunch of men hanging out in the neighborhood, because if most disabled veterans are not able to do that sort of thing. So I, I just, that was all the comment that I had. I, I do know that, um, that this, this same concept is, is working for veterans in Warner Robins. And the neighborhood is, is really nice that, that it's working in, so I just wanted them to know that as well.
And Mr. Simmons, it's, it's totally up to you as, you know, we're not trying to influence you one way or the other. That's, that's true. It's up to you. I think, Mr. Jordan, you were about to interject something?
No, I just, if, if that is what you decide to do, Mr. Simmons, then that would require a motion by council and, obviously, a vote to allow the applicant to withdraw without prejudice. And what that means is, under our zoning statute, once you...
How would that work with his laws?
Apply for rezoning, and that rezoning is denied, then you have to wait a four- or twelve-month period before you can come back and seek another rezoning. If you're allowed to withdraw it without prejudice, then you can come back at any time with a new plan, the same plan. You're, you're not prohibited from coming back at any given time to apply for whatever rezoning you may choose to do. But it is strictly up to you as to whether or not you request that council allow you to withdraw without prejudice. Or you can have council vote on the application.
I think I would give it time and withdraw.
So you would like for council to consider...
I would like council to consider...
Allowing you to withdraw without prejudice.
Allow me to withdraw my presentation to a later time.
Without prejudice.
Without prejudice.
All right, counsel, you've heard the applicant, he would like to withdraw his presentation without prejudice. Can I get a vote, call for a vote on it, please?
I make a motion that we do that.
I need a second, quickly.
Second.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Ms. Walden?
Aye.
Mr. Mullins?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Schinholster?
Thank you, Mr. Simmons, and we'll wait to hear back from you at a later time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Simmons, you can get with Ms. Graham at any time and proceed. I still have to give you the options, and you can decide and proceed.
All right, this concludes our public hearing for tonight. We have one more item under all business, and I will ask the clerk to reordinate O-1911-24 by caption.
An ordinance to amend the Code of Ordinances, City of Millisville, Georgia, Chapter 90, Utilities, Article 3, Section 90-86, entitled Hauled Wastewaters, to restrict the acceptance of waste from wastewater haulers to Baldwin County and contiguous counties, to impose fees for the acceptance of waste, to limit the hauls to 4,000 gallons per haul and for other purposes.
All right, is there any discussion on this ordinance? This is the second reading of this ordinance and is therefore ready for consideration tonight. Is there a motion to adopt the ordinance as read?
Move, we approve. Second.
Ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Ms. Walden?
Aye.
Mr. Mullins?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Schinholster?
Aye.
I will move to new business and ask the clerk to present the alcohol license renewals that are ready for approval. If there is no objection, I will ask the clerk to present all the renewals at once and then ask council to adopt them en masse. Ms. Clerk, please read the 2020 alcohol license renewal.
Al Kila, 168 Garrett Way, beer, wine, liquor, Sunday sales, consumption on premises. S and R Package Store Incorporated, 850 South Wayne Street for beer, wine, liquor package to go. Shri Ganesh Si LLC, The Marketplace, 821 North Columbia Street, beer and wine package to go. The Real Grill LLC, 114 South Wayne Street, beer, wine, liquor, Sunday sales and catering, consumption on premises. Jet Food Store Number 59, 1111 South Wayne Street for beer, package to go. L Migos Mexican Restaurant, 2465 North Columbia Street, beer, wine, liquor, Sunday sales, consumption on premises. Boot and Rally, doing business as Buffington's, 120 West Hancock Street, beer, wine, liquor, Sunday sales, catering, consumption on premises. Aff Pan Enterprises LLC, doing business as Hop In, 1687 North Columbia Street for beer and wine package to go. Kirk's Jerk Chicken, 128 North Wayne Street, beer, consumption on premises. Soul Masters Barbecue, 451 Glen Street, beer and liquor, consumption on premises. Ram Laxman LLC, doing business as Family Corner, 191 West Andrews, for beer and wine package to go. Rare Hospitality International, doing business as Longhorn Steakhouse, 2470 North Columbia Street for beer, wine, liquor, Sunday sales, consumption on premises. Jet Food Store Number 29, 301 East Hancock Street for beer, wine, package to go. Rock DJ LLC, doing business as The Tavern, 119 South Wayne Street for beer, wine, liquor, Sunday sales and catering, consumption on premises. Blazing Wings Incorporated, doing business as Buffalo Wild Wings, 2471 North Columbia Street for beer, wine, liquor, Sunday sales, consumption on premises. And that concludes the list.
All right, cl, counsel, you've heard the presentation en masse. Can I get a motion to adopt the renewals?
So moved. Second.
Clerk, call the roll, please.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Ms. Walden?
Aye.
Mr. Mullins?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Schinholster?
Aye.
Finally, I am reappointing, uh, to the Millisville Housing Authority tonight, Mr. Randy Clark as the resident commissioner on the Millisville Housing Authority Board. All right. This concludes the business on the agenda. Let us, without any other discussion, I wanna thank Dr. Wilson's Political and Politic, Politics and Society class for being present again on tonight with us. And we'd like to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving and a safe Thanksgiving, a safe holiday season as we enter in. If there's nothing else to discuss, can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Second, second.
Adjourn.